Just let me know when we're ready. Welcome to Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, can we have closed session items?
Closed session item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Shay Johnson, and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organizations employees: Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA; Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU; Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA; unrepresented employees. Item two, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employment title, planning director.
Any public comment on any one or all of those items?
There is no public comment.
Thank you very much. We'll move into closed session. Welcome back to the Tuesday, September 28th, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Will everyone please stand with me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can we have our report out from closed sessions?
Report out from closed session from September 21st, 2021. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Shay Johnson, Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organizations: service employees International Union, SEIU, Local 1021; Deputy Sheriff's Association, DSA; Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU; board action, no reportable action. Item two, pursuant to government code 54956.8, conference with real property negotiator regarding price and terms of payment for the following properties affected by the state Route 4 Wagon Trail Realignment Project Phase One. County negotiators are Robert Packenger and Matt Satao. Properties to Scornia Ranches, LP APNs 053-001-018, 053-001-019, 053-007-011, 053-007-031, 053-007-032, and 053-008-060. Board action, no reportable action. Item number three, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employment title, planning director. Board action, no reportable action taken. Item four, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel re-existing litigation, County of Calaveras et al. versus AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al., 117-MD-2804. Board action, no reportable action. Closed session items for today, September 28th. Item one, pursuant to government code 54957.6, conference with county-designated labor negotiators Judy Hawkins, Shay Johnson, and Nick Marvin regarding the following employee organization employees: DSA Sheriff's Association, DSA; Sheriff's Management Unit, SMU; Calaveras County Public Safety Employees Association, CCPSEA; and unrepresented employees. Board action, no reportable action. Item two, pursuant to government code 54657B1, public employment title, planning director. Board action, no reportable action.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. With that, we'll move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. Ms. Medina? Or we'll go on to Mr. Moore if... Oh, there she is. Never mind.
Hello. Thank you for... I just had to rejoin as a panelist. Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair Stoffer, respective board members, and Deputy Clerk of the Board, and our Calaveras community, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. First of all, I would truly heart give our heartfelt thanks to our community, our Calaveras community, for being our eyes and our ears for our animal services. We rely on you folks to say something if you see something. We are dutiful in our response and are committed to ensuring our community animals are healthy and cared for. This Saturday, October 2nd, will be our last free rabies and microchip clinic for the calendar year 2021. The clinic will take place here at the Government Center from 9:00 to noon. We would like to thank our friends of Calaveras Animal Services Focus and all our volunteers. With a special thanks to our veterinarians that have donated countless hours to make our event successful over the past year. And of course, last but not least, I would personally like to thank our animal service staff who work daily with their hearts and their duties and their responsibilities and are tireless in that matter. We have several adoptable cats and dogs looking for their forever homes that are being flashed intermittently on the screen, and you will see them. They are adorable. If you should have any questions regarding any of our precious faroe ones, please contact us at 209-754-6509. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Board. This is Stan Moore, the county CIO. And I want to let everybody know that October is National Cybersecurity Awareness Month, and we in the county are partnering with the Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency to raise awareness of cyber threats. So the theme of the Awareness Month this year is Do Your Part, Be Cyber Smart. Over the course of the month in October, IT will be sharing cybersecurity information and resources throughout the month to help us all be more aware and to know how to better protect county information and resources. We would like everyone to join us in being cyber smart and being part of the Calaveras County cybersecurity culture. Over the month, we will be working with county staff on a weekly basis and providing information to help with the cybersecurity awareness and to also do some exercises with minimal investment of time for each staff to improve on all of our awareness of cybersecurity. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there any further staff comments?
There is no further staff comments.
Thank you. General public comment... Oh, wait, public health update. My apologies. Informational item, public health services receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. Ms. Corey Allen?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board. Corey Allen, Health and Human Services Agency Director. With me today, we have Dr. Renee Ramirez, our health officer. And we were unable to have Doug Archer join us today. He did have a mandatory leadership meeting, but he did provide us some information to make sure that we give you an update. What I first need to request is that I have access to share my screen. Once that's clear, I'll be able to share the PowerPoint with you so you can see the information as I share it. The host has disabled that. Ah, there we go. Thank you very much. With that, good morning, Calaveras County. So today, our September 28th update, wanted to share with you just some new things that are going on. First, we like to look at what those numbers are. We are at 3,382 confirmed cases of COVID-19, active 95 as of now, and three individuals hospitalized. Eligible population here in Calaveras County that hasn't taken their full vaccination series is now over 50%. We are at 53.2%. Tests that we have conducted locally is 60,254, and we sadly are at 71 deaths, and later on today, we will be recording two additional deaths, a male in his 70s and a female in her 40s. That will bring us to 73 fatalities to date. I want to point out also that when we look at our youth population that is eligible for vaccination, in Calaveras County, we are at 27.3%. And what's alarming for us is that is one half of our statewide percentage. The state is at almost 55% of its youth receiving this vaccine. So those are just things that we want to be considering when we look at some of the effects of that lack of vaccine. We are currently manning a COVID hotline. That hotline is answered during the business week, Mondays through Fridays, during the business hours. Information, questions, access to vaccine or to testing, really anything COVID-related, we are happy to take those calls, and we will be sure to get you results or answers as you need. We did want to also point out that one piece of information we were able to share this week was that there was a slight delay in COVID-19 test results at the end of last week. Those have been resolved. And basically, in a nutshell, when there are precautions in place to make sure that accuracy of those tests are clear, sometimes there will be a delay to make sure that those pieces are working seamlessly. So with that, let's see. New information, there is a booster availability now for those interested in a third dose of a vaccine. The vaccine most often used for a booster would be the Pfizer Viontech. The first group of individuals to be considered is your immunocompromised. They really should consider getting, if they have the Pfizer, first and second dose. They should really consider getting that third dose, especially those 65 and older. If you would like to have the Moderna booster, that is the only category of persons that is eligible to receive a third dose. Now, if you've had the Pfizer, you need to have had your last dose six months ago or longer. Now, Moderna is very different. If that was the series you had, and you landed in the immunocompromised grouping, you only needed to have that last shot 28 days ago or more. Those who are unvaccinated or not fully vaccinated are still eligible to receive vaccines, and that's our huge category of individuals we're still attempting to target. And increased... Those within a workplace or institutional setting where there's an increased exposure risk are eligible to receive that booster. Anyone is eligible. It is a self-attestation method for the Pfizer. You'll go through myturn.ca.gov. We can administer those at our mobile van. They can also be located at the CBS in Valley Springs or the Rite Aid in Angels Camp. So as we go through, we can answer questions that we have to that. We remind you that we are mobile. We are mobile for our testing and for vaccines. We work every day except Wednesday so that our team can take those required days off. Walk-in testing, vaccine, we still go through myturn.ca.gov. And remember, we still have our homebound initiative by appointment also through myturn, and that is where we will come to you if you are in fact homebound. You can see our times and locations here on your screen. To access this information, please go to our county website. We also post on our Facebook page. Other testing opportunities, Optum Serve State site is in Semara. They're open daily from 7:00 to 7:00. They continue to work through the Middlewood Fairgrounds. And Optum Serve in Amador is at the Health and Human Services Agency in Sutter Creek. They work Mondays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays. We did cover this two weeks ago in our last presentation, but just as a reminder, the region, including Calaveras County, has embarked upon school sports and extracurricular activities. Health officer orders that basically represents the fact that during high transmission, which we have been in, and low vaccine rate regions, that we increase our masking requirements. I've been really pleased going to our school sites and seeing the modeling by our school personnel. I was recently at an event at Bret Hart, and the principal sat right inside with a mask. And, you know, we had a conversation about how just important it is that our leaders modeled that very behavior. So I will say the results were outstanding as far as really adhering to those requests. Vaccines are effective. Remember that the Delta variant is more contagious, and so we just continue to encourage getting vaccinated. Our COVID hotline, 754-2896. And remember, our testing is walk-in at our mobile site. Dr. Ramirez, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I just want to say thank you to the public and Board of Supervisors, everybody, the schools, our school partners, for your continued support during this difficult time. I know it's not ideal situation to have our students get tested with the frequency that they are for playing sports, but at the same token, we're all kind of doing our due diligence to protect our students and our community. So thank you.
As an update from Mr. Archer with Mark Twain Medical Center, he reports that they have one COVID-positive patient currently on the MedSearch floor, and that individual is not on a ventilator. They have an eight overall census, and though the numbers are still up, they have sort of narrowed out a little bit as far as census goes. So that's our report out. Any questions?
You know, what we have in front of us was done last Friday, so the percentages changed a little bit. I see fully vaccinated went up by half a percentage, or 0.5%, approximately. So it seems that more people are getting vaccinated now than they were a couple months ago at a higher rate. Do you attribute that to us being able to provide walk-ins and everything every day except for Wednesdays and reaching out to the community?
I would attribute it not only to the access through the mobile contact points, but also when people find that their workplace or school has quarantine impacts, I think after some period of time, people tend to come to the realization that continuing to show up and be able to participate in those activities, it does have an impact. I do want to point out that since our last report out, we're actually at 3. almost 7% in our vaccination rate among our whole population, and up 2% in our youth. So those numbers, you know, they are moving in that direction. So thank you for pointing that out.
Hundreds, hundreds of people have gotten vaccinated fully since that time. So I see the statistics moving up somewhat from what they were a couple months ago. Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Ms. Calloway?
Ms. Allen, maybe I didn't hear you. For the booster availability, what is the timeframe after J&amp;J or Moderna that you would get your booster?
Well, Moderna is available to those who are significantly immunocompromised, and there's a very small classification that falls into that. And that's a 28-day period between their last, their second dose and what would be a third dose. J&amp;J does not currently have, as far as I know, and I see Dr. Ramirez shaking his head, in confirmation of that, there is not a booster recommendation at this time.
Okay, thank you. And on this, taking the antigen test in 72 hours of an event, are they being tested at the school, or do they have to go somewhere else?
Yes, Supervisor Calloway, the schools do take the lead on that, and they provide that testing right there.
And what about people who need to have it because they're flying somewhere?
Yes, we receive calls all along on our COVID hotline. I've been helping to man that line, which sort of keeps me in the know on what questions are coming in. That's a big one. We do offer that test through our mobile van. We direct them to the Optum Serve sites. And if someone has a medical provider of their own, and if that person can see them, that's always an option as well. We discourage anyone from going to a hospital setting in order to eliminate any impacts on those environments. But, you know, we do try and send them to those locations that are readily available.
But there's no guarantee that they'll get the results within that 27, 72 hours, correct?
Yeah. And so what we tell them is that the labs themselves are working to the very best ability that they have, and that is outside of any kind of county control, the testing set control. And so I encourage people to just get in there as close to that 72nd hour as possible, and to make sure that they just keep checking their phone as it gets closer to the date of their departure. Once it's on their phone, they'll be able to show that information.
That I understand. But if somebody has already paid for their ticket and they're flying to Kansas City or to Kashmir, and they want that test, there's no rapid test system within the county, correct?
Correct. And what we do also is refer them to speak to their airline around what options may exist.
Supervisor Calloway, if I may, this is not a situation that's unique to Calaveras County. Having been somebody who flew with my children and having them tested, I can attest to it being a very anxiety-provoking situation. Had to have three of my own children tested. One of my children's results came back the very next day, and the next kid came back 48 hours. And my third kid, we were kind of chewing on our nails, so to say, and they had come back just before we boarded the plane. So we can all sympathize and understand the situation. But please understand that it's not unique to just Calaveras County.
I understand that, but it didn't reduce your anxiety at all?
Well, we, yeah, unfortunately, it didn't. However, I can say that the positive note would be my wife and I did not have to get tested because we were able to show proof of quarantine. So the vaccinations were able to help with that quite a bit. And we are anticipating that children under 12, hoping any day now for announcement that seems to be approved.
For what age will that be, Dr. Ramirez?
Under 12. Five to 12 is from what I understand. Yeah. But hopefully, within the, hopefully within the next month or so.
Thank you. I just was out of the area, and I went to three restaurants, and then all three I had to show proof of being vaccinated before I'd be allowed to be seated in the restaurant. So that's something the rural counties don't have. Thank you very much, Ms. Allen, Dr. Ramirez.
You're welcome.
Any further board questions or comments? Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you. Ms. Allen, I just want to say the hotline, I really appreciate you bringing that back and staffing it the way you have. I've heard some positive comments to how the public's been related to through that, through that line and everything. And thank you for stepping up, you know, the vaccinations and the testing for those that make the choice to get them. So, you know, it's making a difference.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Ramirez. General public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency of, by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Do we have anyone in the audience that wants to talk to anything that's not on the agenda today? One last opportunity for anyone out there in internet world? No?
No, none at this time.
Okay. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interest of a party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Any Board members like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Any staff? Public?
There is no staff or public.
Thank you. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Calloway.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. We have a motion by Ms. Calloway, a second by Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 401 absent. With that, let's see, what time do we have? Yes, sir. We'll, we'll take a 10-minute break and be, gotta make sure I'm looking at a clock that is correct. We will be back at 10:04. Be moving on to the regular agenda. Item 26, informational item, administrative office, receive report out from Supervisor Toffinelli regarding the Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services Agency. Mr. Toffinelli?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought I'd bring this to the Board to bring them up to date of what's going on. I talked about it before several times, but I think I'll go through this slide and exactly what Mountain Valley EMS does and what's going on in Mountain Valley to be even bringing this forward so that let everybody know. Mountain Valley Emergency Medical Services Agency. Mountain Valley is a JPA between the following: Calaveras County, Alpine County, Amador County, Mariposa County, and Stanislaus County. And each year, each county signs a contract with Mountain Valley to provide emergency medical services within those counties. And what does that contract do, or what does Mountain Valley do? First off, it has a contract with the ambulance providers for each county. And normally, those contracts are for five years with a five-year extension on them. And each year, when we, when we get to that part where we're going to enter into new contracts, Mountain Valley contacts the counties, the sheriff's offices, the OES offices, and other, the Board, they come before the Board. If you remember, a couple years ago, they came before our Board and made the presentation, and collects information that they can put into the concerns into the contracts that are signed, or the RFPs that go out, where the ambulance providers and air providers, air ambulance providers, to enter into those contracts that meet the needs of each county. Again, that's done every five years, and then there's usually a five-year extension on it. It does contract with the air ambulance providers. It also prevents a vital service within each county in certifying the EMTs and the paramedics that are employed by these ambulance service or even fire departments within those counties. The certification process goes through Mountain Valley EMS within those five counties, and you can also be certified through Mountain Valley EMS if you work outside the county. It provides those services. It certifies the trauma levels at the hospitals that within these counties. And the trauma levels go from 1 to 3. levels go from one to three, with the minimum being a one, and a high trauma being a three. And within our county and Amador County, the hospitals that we have here are ones. So any high trauma, such as stroke victims, heart attack victims, or car accident victims, usually are transported to, if they're not meditated to Davis for their specific, sorry, if they're not meditated to Davis for their specific services, they're usually transported to one of two hospitals in Modesto in Stanislaus County. It provides the monitoring and oversight of ambulance services. And what this entails is each contract with each provider within the counties has specific times on the ambulances that they have arrival dates once they're dispatched. And they have to stay within the timeframe within those contracts. Like, if there's an ambulance call for Moke Hill, and the closest ambulance is here in San Andreas, within the contract, it says that they have to be from the time they receive that call to that place in Moke Hill within 10 minutes. And if they don't make it within 10 minutes, then they're outside the contract. And, and so Mountain Valley monitors and oversees those particular call times. And if they're, they have a certain amount of leeway between the number of calls they have in a month and the times that they can be over. If they're outside of that, then they're in violation of the contract. And there's things that, that, within the contracts that we need to do before we terminate those contracts, if it's a continuing issue, that need to be addressed so they get back within the realm of what they're, they're supposed to be doing and the time they're allotted to get there. That's a short version of it. And it also provides training in, for the EMTs and paramedics. And when I say that, they have to be kept up to date on new things that are happening within that realm of their job. And Mountain Valley provides that training for them. So they're within the requirements of the state. Next, next slide. And I'm, I'm going through this pretty quickly to, to get to the word trying to get to and what's happening, but I just wanted to bring an overview into it. Mountain Valley MSA, its current year budget is $1.639 million. How do we get to that? Well, there's county contributions. And if you look on there, you see the amount each county provides. And where does that money come from? Well, Mountain Valley is part of what they call a LEMSa, or a local LEMSa, or, or emergency, Local Emergency Medical Services Agency. And that's a compromise of the five counties that I brought up earlier. And there's only about four of those LEMSas in, in the whole state. And if you belong to a LEMSa, you're eligible for state grants. And the, the state grant is, at this time, for our current budget, is based on 44 cents per person within the counties. And so if you look at the monies that are there, it's based on 44 percent, 44 cents per person in each county to arrive at these numbers that you see here. And that's the county's total contribution of the $1.6 million. So it really doesn't cost the counties any money to be part of this LEMSa or part of this JPA. How do we get the rest of the money? Next slide. Because we, we are the people that, or we're the agency that provides the ambulance service and enters into the contracts, we, we charge ambulance fees. And in the current budget, ambulance fees are about $426,000. The oversight and monitoring that we charge these services, for those services, is about $335,000. There's a non-emergency transport, which is about $50,000. And that's when they're, it's non-emergency. They transport, they're picking somebody up and they're transporting them from one place to another, from a nursing home to hospital, or from a hospital to a nursing home, or from one hospital to another. But it's not really an emergency. They're not going with lights flashing and sirens going. It's not what they call a non-emergency transport. And there's, we get paid for that through the contracts. There's first watch fees of $40,000, about $41,000, and then the air ambulance fees of about $15,000.
Supervisor, what is first watch fees? What is that?
First watch fees is the first watch for the people that are, kind of a situation. It has to do with when you're being dispatched, and you're coming back from a call, let's say you're transferring, you're transferring somebody from our hospital, Mark Duane, to Modesto. And before, we couldn't dispatch anybody until they came back and reported that they were back at their station, say a station here in San Andreas. Now, because we have first watch, we have this GPS monitoring. And if they've, they've delivered the person into Modesto and they're on their way back, we can now dispatch them. Because we know where they're at, and we can contact them from there. If they're the closest person to where the service is needed, or the closest ambulance to where the service is needed, then we can, we can dispatch them to there.
So there's an additional fee for that?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So let's bring these to, that's a little oversight of Mountain Valley MSA. So why are we here today? Well, as I mentioned earlier, each county signs a contract with Mountain Valley. And it allows for the, um, Mountain Valley to, um, provide the medical services that are needed for each county. And within that contract, in each contract, it allows for a county to withdraw from the JPA, but the contracts are from July 1st to June 30th. But if they want to withdraw from the JPA, they have to provide a letter of withdrawal before January 1st of each year. Stanislaus County was going to withdraw last year, but they didn't do it. But they signed a contract for this year, and it was signed on June 30th. On July 1st, they sent a letter notifying us that at the end of this year, on July, June 30th, they will be withdrawing from Mountain Valley MSA. Their Board of Supervisors voted on that on October 31st, and it's a done deal that they will be moving on out of our LEMSa or out of Mountain Valley MSA. What does that mean? Well, if you go back to some of what information I gave you earlier, and the funding, just the state grant funding is around $250,000, $245,000 that they provide for our budget. In addition to those monies, most of the ambulance service is within that county. Most of the calls going out, most of the larger contracts with AMR, and several of the other providers within Stanislaus County. Most of the money that you see there coming from those ambulance services, the $425,000 and the other fees comes from Stanislaus County. So it's going to be a major financial hit to Mountain Valley MSA to be moving on with the four counties that we have involved right now. It's, it's unfortunate. I understand why they're going on their own. And, and to be frank, as I mentioned earlier, they will be losing the money, the state grant, because they will no longer be in a LEMSa. So they're forfeiting that $245,000 they get from the state grant. But they're forming their own, and they feel they'll be more in charge of, of their whole production, what's going on. They have hired Richard Murdock, who's the former executive officer of Mountain Valley. They hired him a couple of years ago. So he's well informed on how to run an ambulance provided service, emergency services. And they're banking on him to run this sticker item in Stanislaus County. That leaves us with four counties. And if you add up what's on the prior list, minus the $245,000, it doesn't leave us much of a budget to run Mountain Valley MSA with the other four counties. So what, what does that mean? Well, that means that, I want to point out also that currently our offices are in Modesto within Stanislaus County. And once they move, they move on, on June 30th, we, we will have to relocate those offices. And we, I've had conversations with Krista, I've had conversations with that board about moving the current offices into Calaveras County. And we are, if you look at a map on the existing counties that will be remaining, we're pretty centrally located. And I think most of that board agrees that the proper place to put it would be within Calaveras County. I've had conversations with Krista about maybe finding some places here, a couple offices here, or an office here to house about three or four employees within government center. So we could keep the cost down at least for leasing property to run this agency. It's a vital agency that really needs to be taken care of. Currently, it has nine employees. Again, we're looking to move it down to three or four employees, because the remainder of those employees, because of Stanislaus, and its size, mostly pertain to Stanislaus County with their emergency services and their OES, and the large amount of ambulances, services that they have there. I think we can get by with the remaining counties of about three or four employees. So what is Mountain Valley MSA Board doing about these issues? Currently, we created two committees. One committee is to move forward with recruiting employees to move up here, locating a place for us to move the offices. We're also looking for revenue, service revenues that we can generate for the move. We're also looking at having, because Stanislaus County currently has the financials for Mountain Valley, I've had contact with Kathy about transferring those money purposes here to Calaveras County and having our auditor controller do the funding situation. She wouldn't necessarily be sending out invoices, but when time came to pay those invoices, she would, we would be using her like we do other agencies, like the fire departments and the other small districts that we have. She's open to that idea. The other committee that we have is out recruiting at least two counties. There's two counties that express some possibilities of joining Mountain Valley once Stanislaus leaves. And I really, I was waiting to have those negotiations started and moving forward before, that's why I delayed for two weeks. But I can't come up, can't say those counties right now because we don't have an ongoing situation with them. Because of, the other committee have two members on it. One was Jeff Brown from Amador County, and one was Miles from Mariposa County. And Miles contacted COVID. And as a matter of fact, he told me yesterday, three of their board members contacted COVID and tested positive for it.
Mariposa?
In Mariposa.
Wow.
So for the last two weeks, they've been quarantined. He's hoping to get a negative test results here, either yesterday or today. So that's kind of been put on hold for the last two weeks. But there are two, again, two counties that express the possibility of joining Mountain Valley, which would help us financially in contracts, not only with the LEMSa, with the state, on the 44 cents per person, but also the contracts with the, the ambulances and EMTs and the paramedics, and certifying all those, and their hospitals that they have there. It would certainly boost us in, here at Mountain Valley. And I would feel a little bit more comfortable. I want to bring up a point that I put on here, but I didn't mention, that currently, in addition to our $1.6 million budget, we do have a reserve, which is going to help tremendously over the course of the next three or four years, as we move out of Stanislaus and move into what we're going to end up being here. And, and so we have a reserve of about $1.6 million right now, financially. So financially, we're okay to start with. My concern is, is long-term, moving forward long-term, and how we're going to sustain services we provide on a budget without having counties, their Sals, put general funds into it. And that's my concern, is continue the way it is, where it doesn't cost us a lot for these services. It actually doesn't cost anything other than what the state grants that we get based on our population. Would truly like to keep it that way, because we are rural counties, all of us that, if you look at it, low populations in our counties, tight budgets every year. To have to come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars every year would be very difficult for a couple of those counties, in Mariposa and Alpine specifically, to continue to provide these services. But we are moving forward. We're looking at it. We are dealing with, we, our current council is a gentleman by the name of Derek Cole, who's a council for Mountain Valley MSA. We are, Terry and I and our, our committee are, are, are having discussions with him about what the transition will look like. He is, he is not an employee of Stanislaus County, he's an employee of Mountain Valley, and he has told them specifically that whatever legal issues come up during this time that has to do with ambulance contracts, that he works for Mountain Valley MSA. Although Stanislaus is still, until June 30th, part of this JPA. So it's a very difficult situation. But he's handling it very well. We've hired somebody to go in and give us a complete inventory of everything Mountain Valley has, including all of the software that we have, and all of, everything that we have. So when we transition here, we know what we have, we know what we need to do, and we know where we need, what room we need to house what we have. So that's moving forward. It's going to be a very, hopefully seamless transition. That's what Terry and I are looking for. I don't know any hiccups that come our way, or whatever it has to do, because a lot of it has to do with the state, and during the transition period, and getting their blessings on things that we're going to be doing. But I don't see any real problems moving forward as long as we have the funding streamlined that we're working on getting to keep it going, as we know it has been for the last 20 years. And so I'm open for any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. I've got a couple. And I, I assume, since you brought up the reserves, the 1.5 to 1.6 million in reserves, with Stanislaus leaving, they can't take any of that with them?
No, that's Mountain Valley.
Right, okay.
But, but I will tell you this, what is up in question is the contracts that Mountain Valley has with the ambulance providers for Stanislaus County, that generates yearly a very large amount of income. If you look at what I presented.
Yeah.
Whether those contracts go with Stanislaus County, or they stay with Mountain Valley, is at issue. Or whether they're allowed to buy those contracts out, or say, okay, Mountain Valley, we'll give you 25% a year for the length of these contracts until the end, and then we enter into our own contracts negotiated by ourselves. Those are some of the issues, the legal issues that I was talking about. I can give you my personal opinion, but it's my personal opinion. It doesn't really mean anything. Although I've been in contracts my whole life, I'm a contractor. But until that part of it settles, I, I really, it's a tough situation. Again, Derek, our, our council, has said it is a very sticky situation. It's not something that has precedence to it. So.
No, I appreciate the work. And the second- And the second part to my question was kind of to the point that you brought up. I mean, just with the share based on population, Stanislaus with the $245,000 and change is 84.5% of that, of that total coming from the state. If things were all equal, then the, which we know they aren't necessarily, but all these fees that are coming in would be 84.5% less, if it was equal.
And that's correct.
And then with Stanislaus County being a service provider within our JPA, there's more cities which they have to travel less distance. So to conduct business in Calaveras County, potentially being a rural area, as with the majority of the JPA, would cost more to conduct business. And those are, those are the examples that you're talking to with being able to possibly gap fill it with the reserves into the future until we come up with a proper business plan that fills in those gaps for a rural area.
Correct. And Merida knows back in 99, 2000, when we had the ambulance wars, and the reasons that we specifically went to this JPA was cost effectiveness. We would have to provide all kinds of money and insurance, money set aside to be able to provide the same service that we're getting here for basically no cost to the county. And there was some ambulance wars because it used to be single service providers, and Merida knows that back then. But in my, and I will bring this up, and I personally told them, no. And it's been very equitable with Stanislaus, there's no animosity or anything. They've agreed to stay on another year to help us go through the transition. And they also offered for us, the other four counties, to contract through them to provide the service. But the problem with contracting with them, it gives them sole custody of everything that happens. We as a board have no control or authority over anything that they want to do, or whatever provider they want to provide with. I told them I didn't think that was going to work for us, that, and the other four, three counties, I think, are in the same position, that we'd rather go forward as the LMSA that we are, the JPA that we are, and bring on other counties and grow that way than having them contracted out to providing our services.
Thank you, Mr. Toffnelli. Any further board questions? Public comment or questions?
There is no online public comment at this time.
Is there something you'd like to say in closing, Mr. Toffnelli?
No, I will keep you abreast of what's happening on as we move forward and we get to major points. June 30th is coming very quickly. We need to get out and, I didn't mention, I did mention there was nine employees, but it's the intent of Stanislaus County to offer employment to those nine employees that are with Mountain Valley and just transition them over to, and they're in negotiations with their union and H R, because those would be new positions within their county. So there's some things going on there. I don't know if all nine employees will agree to go to Stanislaus County, but I know the top, the top ones that are there, the executive ones, will probably go with Richard Murdoch into Stanislaus County. So we are in dire need here to really quickly start our recruitment periods, get out, and that's the next agenda I have to authorize that on our next board meeting, which is coming up, August, I want to say August 13th or 14th. Excuse me, October 13th or 14th, to get the okay from the board and the funds to go out and recruit for those positions, at least three or four of those positions. So, that's it.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll move on to item 27, Resolution Human Resources, Adopt a Resolution Approving Modifications to the Service Employees International Union Local 10 to 1. Memorandum of Understanding for the Term of October 1st, 2021 to September 30th, 2026. Ms. Hawkins?
Yes, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. I am very happy to be bringing before the board a resolution adopting the changes to the SEIU MOU. And I really want to thank the SEIU bargaining team and the counties bargaining team for bringing forth a agreement for five years. We have never had a five-year agreement, and so this is pretty exciting. And so one of the big changes is that we do have a COLAR the first year for 4% and then 3% every year after that. And so I am ready to answer any questions the board has.
Board?
Judy, you've been, you've been negotiating every year since you've been here. What are you going to do with your salve for five years?
I'm going to go to Disneyland.
No, we'll find something else for you to do.
Good job, good job for you and your team, and thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Any further board comments? With that, we'll give the opportunity for any public comment.
There is no online public comment.
Nothing from SEIU? Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. If there's no further comments, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move this resolution, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cowley. We have a second from Ms. Fulendorf. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Those not in favor, passes on a 401 absent.
Thank you.
I just want to thank everyone for having a equitable contract that just came before us and, you know, five years is a longstanding contract, and I think we'll all be thankful for not having the extra work moving forward.
Yes.
Bring up item 28, Action Item Agriculture, Receive Presentation and Approve Calaveras County's 2020 Agriculture, Crop, and Livestock Report. Ms. Fowler?
Good morning, Chair Stopper, Honorable Members of the Board, CEO Von Motta. Let me go ahead and, you guys can hear me okay? Okay, perfect. So in accordance with Section 227 of the California Food and Agricultural Code, I respectfully submit the 2020 Calaveras County Crop Report. The gross crop value for the County of Calaveras was $21,795,982, representing a decrease of 24% from 2019 values. Cattle and calves were again the leading commodities in Calaveras County with a value increase of 6% over 2019 values. Overall livestock values remained flat in 2020 due to lower livestock numbers harvested being offset by increased cattle values, reflecting the strong prices in the local beef market. Another wildfire heavy season in California coupled with a light wine grape crop compensated for the flooded wine grape markets of 2019. Nevertheless, some local vineyards left fruit on the vine due to uncertainties of wildfire smoke in addition to the COVID-19 pandemic's effect on farm labor availability and industry sales. This was reflected in the substantial 48% decrease in 2020's wine grape values. As with the rest of the nation, our agricultural industries strive to protect food in our communities through the uncertain times of the COVID-19 pandemic. We thank them for their heroic efforts. Monetary values in this report are freight onboard and do not reflect net returns or profits realized by the growers. I wish to extend my sincere appreciation to all the people who provided information and data used in this report, including our agricultural producers, our industry representatives, and other public agencies. Thank you to all my staff, especially Sean Zmac, Catherine Talbot, and Justice Rasmussen for their hard work in compiling information for this report. Without everyone's valuable input, this report would not be possible. With that, I will be releasing to the public the actual report after this meeting, and I just wanted to kind of go over a few of the trends of some of the larger commodities, just so you guys kind of know what happened in the county in 2020. So, basically, cattle and calves, as I said, that they did actually raise 6% over 2019, which was actually a nice surprise considering statewide, the COVID-19 pandemic really took a toll on the cattle industry. That however, did translate over into overall livestock. So as was seen across the nation, there was a lot of issues at processing plants with COVID-19 staffing issues, which created a backlog of animals to be processed, compounding this. There was also drought issues, so there wasn't a lot of forage for livestock, which meant that in addition to there being a backlog of animals to be processed, a lot of growers had to, ranchers had to sell some of their head, and that was also leading to a decrease in value. So again, it was nice to see that we bucked that trend here in Calaveras for cattle. Timber, so timber prices were down in Calaveras, and that is actually, it has to do with a rotation schedule. So both our timber preserves and the timber industry here, they actually rotate through different areas of what they're going to harvest, because obviously it's a large tree, takes a while to grow. And 2020, they weren't really focused in Calaveras County, they had actually done a lot more in Amador and Toolumee. Then wine grapes, so as I had mentioned, prices were down due to the possibility of smoke taint and also due to water issues. So those vines need the water to produce the fruit, so if there's no water, it's not going to produce a lot of fruit. And otherwise nursery, so nursery was actually kind of surprising. It went up, and that's because of COVID-19. So a lot more people are staying at home. They wanted to beautify their homes, both inside and out, so they bought indoor plants, they bought landscaping plants, and they started planting gardens. So those numbers are up, and that's not just here, but nationwide. Almonds, so almonds are down, and that is again because of water. Almonds use quite a bit of water, and when it's not available from the state, then they have to go to irrigation sources, so water districts, water districts obviously cost a little bit more, so they, that cuts into profit. And then compounding this, the markets were actually saturated with product in 2020, so that again made it difficult to get a higher value, and the prices were depressed. That's the same thing that we saw in walnuts, so there was a decrease in price per ton paid. Again, because of COVID-19, there was a shortage of labor, of people available, and those who were were more expensive. So what had happened in this county was some of the growers actually left some of their crop on the trees because there was no profit to be had in actually harvesting. And apiary also affected by the drought, so no water, no wildflowers, and that the beekeepers had to supplement a lot more with food and water for their bees. And then also, they were affected by mainly almonds and the berry crops because they have a lot of pollination contracts for their services, and because the drought was affecting those crops, there wasn't a lot of contracts to be had, so again decreased the numbers So basically, the overall, what we saw was COVID-19 pandemic, the drought, and then wildfire smoke really affected agriculture. And again, that was statewide, not just here. A lot of other counties that have released crop reports have a lot of similar trends, where a lot of the numbers were really depressed. I'm hoping that this year, the ag industry is very, very resilient, and they've overcome a lot of the COVID-19 issues, but we're wait and see as far as the wildfire smoke and the drought, which continues. Moving on to other areas, I did add some extra information in the crop report, just because we have a lot of programs in our department that not a lot of people know about, so I was just going to go over those briefly, just to kind of give everybody here an idea. And also just to highlight my staff's really hard work, because they're out there all day, every day, and they do a really fantastic job. So pest exclusion. My staff conducted 315 separate inspections at six different facilities under this program. Pest exclusion is our first line of defense, to keep pests, whether they are animals, insects, if they're plants, pathogens, to keep them out of our county so that they don't affect our agriculture or even our residents, their landscaping, that sort of a thing. So with these inspections, this mostly takes place at, we have a UPS distribution center, so they go in, they look at packages there that have agricultural stuff in them, whether it's plants, seeds, fruit, that sort of a thing, and they look at it for certain certifications, mattering on where they come from, from within the state, within the country, within the world, and make sure they have the right certifications, and they look clean and ready to go, and then they let them move on to their final destination. Pest detection is our second line of defense, so with this one, it's where we're actually looking around the county to see if something has come in. For us, that's mostly insects, so insect pests. We placed 583 insect traps and serviced them 4,217 times in 2020 alone. And these traps, you'll see them pretty much all over the county, so they're in ag areas, they're in residential areas, they're out in the forest. There's different colors and shapes mattering on the insect pests we're trying to trap. So for 2020, we were looking for gypsy moth, which is really voracious in eating conifer trees, and they've, they can actually decimate an entire forest, it's been seen on the East Coast. Japanese beetle, which is again another voracious eater, and this one will actually eat a lot of landscaping material and likes to overwinter in turf. They've actually had a few little outbreaks in Sacramento County that they're trying to control over the last few years. Unfortunately, it looks like they have. Mediterranean fruit fly, so as the name indicates, they like fruit. Same thing with the oriental fruit fly, the melon fly, and then there's glasswing sharpshooters, which are a, again, something that will attack a lot of different kinds of ornamentals, but it's most concerned to our grape growers because they carry a disease, Pierce's disease, and it just affects plants, but it can kill grapevines. And with light brown apple moth, it's the same thing, where they can attack a lot of different landscaping material, but they can ruin grape clusters, and again, so that's a concern to our grape growers. The last insect we did was emerald ashbore, so we put out a few traps for that, again, just making sure it's not in our county. So none of these insects occur in our county that we know of at this moment, and we want to keep it that way. Then moving on to pest eradication. So this is the program when pests actually has come into the county, and it is established, but it's not to the point where we couldn't eradicate it. Mostly, this is going to be non-native invasive weed species. We do have a handful of these in the county, and we go out and conduct surveillance, looking for both new sites, historical sites, so that we can control those areas and make sure it doesn't spread, because this outcompetes native species, and it is not palatable to livestock, and can basically take over an area and reduce its usefulness. I am very excited that we did revitalize this Central Sierra Partnership Against Weeds, which is a weed management area group, also known as CSPA. This was started in 1997, and it is a, it's a bunch of partners, that's our county, so our department, it's a Toolumee Counties Ag Department, it's UC Extension, it is state partners, it's industry partners, and it can also be residents as well that can join this. What they basically do is they work to educate the public about some of these non-native invasive weeds, because the more eyes we have out there in the field, the quicker that we're going to see any of these species and be able to control them. If anybody is interested in going to any of these meetings, we are going to have a CSPA meeting next month, so they can reach out to the Ag Department, and we can get them some information on that. Then lastly, weights and measures program. So this is something that a lot of people don't even associate with the Ag Department, but weights and measures is a big part of what we do as a department. Our inspectors went out and they inspected 610 commercial weighing devices, or excuse me, measuring devices, 246 commercial scales. And that's basically, what they do is they go out and they check anything that's commercial, if it counts, measures, weighs, that device to make sure it is accurate, so that you get what you pay for. And it's something where, again, if there's any issues, we'd be the department you would reach out to, we get a lot of calls regarding this. And we, when we do inspect, we actually put a little round seal on there, it says State of California, County of Calaveras, it has the actual year, my name, it has our phone number for 2021, so you'll know the last year that that device was tested and sealed as accurate. Otherwise, I'm pretty much at the end of that, unless anybody has any questions for me, I can answer. me, I can answer.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fowler. Any board member questions?
I have several questions.
Ms. Cowell.
One, my scale is broken.
Oh, no.
It's over, it shows overage. Are we having mosquito issues this year?
I haven't got a lot of calls about mosquito issues. There was, I've only received one call that I know of, which I did forward on to the correct person over in environmental management. We did have a lot of calls, though, from mosquito fish. So I guess that would be the biggest tell, that there are a lot more mosquitoes out there. Yeah, I have heard, because of the drought, that there's more pooling, not as much moving water, but as far as actual calls for mosquitoes themselves, not.
On the weights, you do the ones that are at grocery stores?
Mm-hmm.
So the tag that you talked about would be on the scales in the respective grocery stores, or for the consumer?
Yes, so if you go into a grocery store, you're most likely going to see them actually two locations. So one's going to be at like the deli or in the meat counter, so when they weigh before they give you a package, so again, any time for commercials, when they're making a transaction, that it's based on the weight, they have to have that sealed. So you'll see, actually, it's going to be the flat platform, it's usually right on the side, and again, it's, I'd say it always has a white background, but there's one year, because we alternate colors, where it'll have a yellow background, but it's round, you'll be able to see it, and then there's actually a photo of one for 2020 in the report, and that's pretty much what they always look like, they just change color in the year.
Thank you. Where are you finding the invasive weeds?
Everywhere. So it's, they, it is typical that, like you would expect, so where there's a lot of vehicles traveling, there can be seeds that come off, so on like right-of-way, it's roadside, that's a large area to find them. But honestly, we've been out, you know, in forest service lands, we've been on just residential areas, and who knows how they got there, but they got there. So it's kind of across the board.
On the cattle, it rose 6% over 2019.
Yes.
And then you go on to say it's now flat.
Yep, that's including the other livestock. It was basically, they basically balanced each other out. One was depressed, one had increased, so they kind of balanced each other out, and it was about the same price in 2019 versus 2020.
On timber?
Mm-hmm.
Since Calaveras was not impacted by, let's say, fires and so forth, but you're saying that timber production is down, but the cost of timber to the consumer is up substantially?
Yes.
Is that because timber production is down?
So initially, what had happened, and this is just from my understanding, in the industry as a whole, not Calaveras, is what happened was, because of COVID-19, they kind of shut down all their plants for processing. So all the mills stopped. So they stopped harvesting, and because of that supply and demand, everybody was at home. So not only was there no lumber to be had, everybody wanted lumber, because it was time for the remodel. So that's why the prices just skyrocketed. Now, for us, as a county, it's, it just happened that it was depressed this year, like I said, because it turns out that the industry rotates through, because it takes, you know, 20 to 40 years for a crop. So they rotate through different areas, and this was just a light year for this county, so it wasn't related at all.
I have one more.
Sure.
I really like to report, thank you. Based on we've had an early harvest this year, what do you see happening in the wine, in the grape-growing industry for '21? Similar to what, I'm assuming what you're reporting on was 2020?
Yes, 2020. So I'm hoping that on the wine side of it, it'll be good, because everybody was at home, and they enjoyed a nice glass of wine. So the, on the wine side of it, it'll definitely be up. On the actual production of the grapes themselves, I think it's going to be pretty flat. Hopefully, up a little bit, like I said, because of resiliency as far as labor issues, as far as getting people to come in and actually pick. But again, a lot of smoke this year, drought again this year, so it looks like it's a fairly light crop again this year.
Thank you, Ms. Fowler.
Yeah, absolutely. Any other questions?
I have a question. And this is just probably me needing to get educated, since I'm new to the board. Curiosity, I know that Calaveras County has not accepted cannabis in as an ag product. However, how can it be folded into a report like this, maybe in the future?
Oh, I'm ahead of you on that one. So what I'm going to do is this year, so for 2020, I actually did a specialized report just for the grape industry. I'm going to be doing the same thing this year for the cannabis industry, so that I can do a supplement. So basically, until this is federally legal, I can't actually put it in the crop report, because there's a lot of pass-through money from federal level to the California Department of Food and Ag. So what I'm going to do is like a little supplement for you guys, and then that way you can kind of get an idea of about how much, you know, it's acreage-wise, I can tell you, you know, there's, actually, I looked it up, just in case you asked. So there is 58.8 acres that I have in our system under our operator identification numbers, which the growers have to come in and get, and there's 59 actual operator IDs. So they're about an acre apiece, average. And, but like I said, yeah, we're going to, we're going to send out a survey to all those growers, and then that way, we'll have more information for you next year, and hopefully it'll be legal on a federal level soon, and we can add it in there, because, yeah, it's a big industry.
Can I piggyback on Ms. Foulendorf? Are you allowed to provide services to the legal growers, such as?
Oh, yeah.
Scales, pests?
Yep.
So forth?
Absolutely. So again, so they do have to come in and get that operator identification number. And then, in addition to that, they have to get a weigh master, showing that basically they know how to correctly weigh their product. And then we actually seal those scales as well. And then we can go out and we can help them go do onsite visits, make sure everything looks good, especially when it comes to if they apply any kind of herbicide, then we can go out there, work with their employees, make sure, you know, they're wearing the right PPE, protective equipment, and all of that. So we do offer a lot of services and resources for our cannabis growers, and they're welcome to call.
I just have one question.
Sure.
How's the new truck?
It's fantastic. So yeah, I put a picture in the crop report for you guys, so you could see it. So it's a really nice, really appreciate you guys letting us have that. And you can see, it moves, those are, it's got the knuckle boom crane, and those are thousand-pound weights, and there's so much mobility with that crane. I mean, we can get it into spots that we couldn't get before. Because I mean, some of those, those scales are kind of tucked in odd areas, so it's a really, really nice truck.
It's kind of controversial, but we got it passed.
Really appreciate that, yeah. It's a beautiful truck. You guys should come out and see it.
Any further board questions or comments? Public comment?
There is no online public comment.
Thank you very much. If there's no other comments or questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the crop report.
On the board?
Thank you, Ms. Foulendorf. A motion by Ms. Foulendorf.
Second.
A second by Supervisor Toffinelli. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes on a 401, absent of the board.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. County clerk recorder and registrar of voters. Appointment of applicant to Calverse Public Utility District pursuant to Elections Code, Section 10515. Ms. Turner.
Good morning, I'm Rebecca Turner, County Clerk Recorder and Registrar of Voters. This appointment is being requested by the Calverse Public Utility District, because they have an insufficient filing in the November 2020 election. They have submitted four applications and a letter of recommendation for two of those applicants. They did conduct an interview of all four applicants, and went away from that recommending two of them would be a better fit for the board.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Shall we hear from the applicants in the room, or if, and see if the board have any questions of them, or shall we have a discussion first?
Here's the chair.
First, we'll go to a public comment, and then we'll let the applicants talk for, and we can post.
There is no online public comment.
Very good. Any applicants in the room that would like to say anything?
Good morning, members of the board. Thank you for this opportunity to comment. CPUD is faced with a lot of decisions and a lot of uphill issues ahead of them. Significantly and foremost is rebuilding their reserves. They've had to tap into those reserves since the last rate increase. Dealing with that, they have two areas with the MHI below the poverty level within the county. They also have many senior individuals or individuals who have a fixed income, who are also struggling to pay their water bills. So immediately that the board must face is, how are they going to build these reserves? To build the platform, not just for the immediate future, which is immense, but also to sustain the district for the next 20, 30, 50 years. And what they do here in this initial process that they're faced with right now, is going to be that base for those next 30, 40, 50 years. Those are valuable considerations. I've dealt with this kind of issue since 1970, so I do believe that I'm a candidate for, for being on the board and helping to build a direction for the board and the district, as well as constituents. In addition to that, I've dealt with a lot of grant and other opportunities. We've done with CCWD, for a long time, we did a additional program outside of the district, where we had contributions and fundraisers to help support senior livings and low-income people to pay their bills, kind of like the PG&E care program. But as a water district, we have more limitations to do those types of projects, programs. So there's some, there are some avenues out there, there's also some grants out there that could assist, and certainly, the local community grant program would be a viable asset for that. On the other issue that the CPUD foremost has is the water rights. Water rights, there is very little water right now, especially with this long-term drought that we've had. And other areas are building up ways, creating ways, that they can use water that our county has not perfected. We must perfect our water, we must find ways to utilize our water. Sitting there and just saying that we have water rights that are going unused, water's flowing downstream, other agencies are coming up with ways to take those county of origin water rights and basically eliminate them or reduce them for our county, because we don't have the growth, and we don't have the use, we don't have the customer base to secure and perfect those water rights. And those issues are very predominant right now in the struggle with water, especially with the drought. There are ways that the district could sell some water on a limited basis, retaining the rights, and CPUD has not really sought that out effectively, and they haven't included the rates that are currently going throughout the state or even the nation. The rates that they're looking at, they just went into a contract with CCWD, and yes, it's in the county, but it's still a very low contract. It's below the state average, and East Bay is looking at selling a lot of their water for a much more dollar amount, and that's our water, it flows through our county. And also Stockton East Water District and some of the other valley water districts are looking to buy water, and would be very prudent of CPUD to be in there and to sell some of our water on that limited basis, reserving our rights. And I do believe that with my water right experience since 1970s, that I would be a key asset to introducing and building a platform for those.
Your name, please? I didn't catch it.
I'm sorry. Tammy Hebrard.
Okay, thank you. Any board questions? Not this time, you can come back to it later. Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen on the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Jack Tressler. I have to agree with almost everything Ms. Hebrard said. The board is definitely, CPUD is definitely facing some challenging times. A little bit about myself, so you understand better. Born and raised, been here my whole life, currently a business owner. I run a business that annually does about three-quarters of a million dollars, and I also manage a business for another company that does upwards of $5 million of sales every year. So everything to do with the county, CPUD, they're all businesses, and you need people on a board that are going to make common sense decisions. We do need to make changes, we do need to bring this county, the agencies in it, up to current specs. I also, I was approached by a lot of people who were concerned about the fact that most people on the board are in a certain area. So as you guys are all from different areas, you represent different constituents. I do live here in San Andres, excuse me, and that's why I had people approach me about actually running for this position or applying for it. I am involved in the community, my children go to school here, sporting events, so I'm out and about, listening to people, what are their concerns, what are their needs? And they know I'm kind of outspoken, I like to be involved, so they said, "Jack, why don't you get on board, try to run for this?" I will be honest, I do not have the background in water that Ms. Hebrard does have, but I have business, excuse me, I have a business background, I have construction background, and obviously, I went from, you know, again, working construction to a very successful business, sorry. So I feel that I as well would be a proper candidate, and I would be able to represent the people of San Andres, which is a large group of constituents under the board purchasing water from them, as Ms. Hebrard's kind of in a mokehill area, they're, all the rest of board members, to my understanding, are mokehill area, and there's, there is some concern from the people of San Andres that they don't have proper representation. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tressler. Is there any questions of Mr. Tressler, or should we bring it back to the board and have some deliberation? We can, we can ask questions of him here in a moment if anything comes up also. So thank you for your time and your statement.
Thank you very much.
There does not seem to be.
Thank you. With that, I, we'll bring it back to the board. We have four candidates on our agenda, two recommendations from CPUD, and I believe the two recommendations from the current CPUD board are the two that are presently here and have made testament to why they would make good board members for the utility district. So is there, is there anything anybody would like to say?
I'm interested in, about the other two candidates that aren't here, and I'm hearing mixed information on whether they were all interviewed, I'm hearing mixed stories, or they were not all interviewed. I don't know.
Ms. Turner?
I was notified by the district secretary that all four were interviewed, and from those interviews, they found Jack Tressler and Tammy Hebrard to be the better fit for the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Turner.
I am interested in what Supervisor Toffinelli has to say. We just We just did a municipal service review of the district, which I thought was very well done. I thought it was very impressive on where they are as a district.
And she's talking about LAPCO. We did a review with CPUD at LAPCO, and it was very well-run, very good public utilities district. My preference is, after looking and reviewing the applications and reviewing CPUD, there are a number of people from Moke Hill that are on that board. And I think, in my opinion, to keep the balance, that I would prefer that somebody from San Andreas be placed on there, just so there's a balance between it and not a one-sided thing. So I would be in favor of Jack. My pick would be Jack, pointing Jack to the decision.
Is that a motion, Mr. Toffenelli?
I would move that we put Jack on the board.
We have a motion by Mr. Toffenelli to move Jack Tressler as a board member for CPUD appointment. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. We have a second by Ms. Coway. All those in favor of the appointment of Jack Tressler to the CPUD board?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes on a 401, absent of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you, Mr. Jack Tressler, and thank you, Tammy, for your time today and your consideration for, you know, representing the people in the respective district that you're in. It's much appreciated, and there'll be plenty of opportunity, again, for you in the future, Tammy. Ms. Hebrard. Let's make sure I get this next one right, because I think I, I'm on to number 30 here. Resolution, planning. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to approve LLA 21-24 for the Robert Garamendi family and Chili Gulch Enterprises LLC. At this time, I'm going to open the public meeting. Ms. Gina Catherine, I assume that you're up. Good to see you.
Indeed, good to see you, too. Good morning, everyone. As previously mentioned, I'm Gina Catherine with the County Planning Department. These items come to you in two parts, so let's go ahead and start off with part one. If all of you recall back in 2019, the historic Garamendi Ranch, south of McCollum Hill, off of State Route 49, was divided in interest distributing the land to the trustees of the Garamendi Family Trust. As a result of that distribution, six new ag preserve contracts were established. In order to accomplish this, multiple certificates of compliance and lot line adjustments were approved, formalizing the contracts we see today. Now, Robert Garamendi and Sam Garamendi, on behalf of Chili Gulch Enterprises, are still fine-tuning the boundaries of their adjoining preserves. Nielsen Road traverses two parcels, creating pockets of underutilized land. By adjoining the boundaries, land on either side of Nielsen Road will be merged appropriately with each adjoining preserve, creating contiguous agriculture preserves that adhere to the road rather than crossing the road. Lot Line Adjustment 21-24 proposes to transfer 8.95 acres of land into ag preserve, in ag preserve contract 368 for Robert Garamendi, to ag preserve contract 371 for Sam Garamendi, and transfer 3.95 acres of land owned by Sam, but not currently in the ag preserve, to Robert Garamendi to be included in his ag preserve contract 368. This results in the reduction of 5.46 acres of land to ag preserve contract 368, and an increase of 8.95 acres to ag preserve contract 371. To facilitate a lot line adjustment of land in an agriculture preserve, Government Code Section 51257 requires you make seven findings. The evidence of these findings have been prepared for your consideration and reflect in both your staff report and your resolution. Approval of this lot line adjustment will increase the productivity of the land by eliminating the underutilized segmented portions of the ranch. Do you have any questions regarding the lot line adjustment?
Any board member questions? It seems not at this time. So we give the opportunity for Mr. Bob Garamendi or Mr. Sam Garamendi at this time to comment, correct? Although I'm not sure if they're here. It's pretty, no.
Neither party.
Neither. So then, I'll bring it back to the board. Is there any comments? There's no rebuttals there. Public comment?
There's no online public comment.
Very good. I'll bring it back to the board, and with no comments or anything, if there's anything you would like to say to sum it up, Ms. Catherine?
Nope, that's about it.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing at this time and entertain a motion.
I'll move it aside, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
Second.
A second by Ms. Fohlendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Passes on a 401, absent of the board. With that, we'll move on to item 31. Resolution, planning. Conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution deestablish California Land Conservation Contract Agriculture Preserve Number 368 and 371, and simultaneously establish California Land Conservation Contract Agriculture Preserve Number 386 for the Robert Garamendi family and 387 for Chili Gulch Enterprises LLC. I will open the public meeting. Ms. Catherine.
Okay. So now that you've approved the lot line adjustment, this leads us to the second half of this request. Because the boundary of each preserve has been modified, the two parties mutually agree to rescind their current contracts and simultaneously enter into new contracts. Approval of this resolution will disestablish ag preserve contracts 368 and 371, and reestablish the new boundaries as ag preserve contract 386 totaling 651.59 acres for the Robert Garamendi family, and ag preserve contract 387 totaling 207.39 acres for Chili Gulch Enterprises LLC.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Any questions by the board members? Any interested parties?
There is no online.
And no public comment.
And no public comment.
Then I'll bring it back to the board, and I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Fohlendorf. All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes on a 401, absent of the board. Well, I didn't ask anybody if they said nay. Okay, I'm right. 401.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. That was easy. With that, we'll bring, move on to item 32. Action Item. Division of Cannabis Control. Introduce and waive full reading of an uncodified ordinance establishing a cannabis tax appeal fee, authorize summary publication. Mr. Greg Wayland.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the Board of Supervisors.
Ms. Julie Moss Lewis, I see you there.
Yeah, so I'm Greg Wayland. I'm the Director of Cannabis Control, and the item before you this morning proposes the introduction of an ordinance that would establish a fee for hearing cannabis tax appeals before the county hearing officer. And it also provides a fee study report that was prepared by the DCC with collaboration from the Tax Collector's Office. By way of background, as the board is aware, on November 3, 2020, Measure G passed, it included a provision at Chapter 356180C that permitted the Board of Supervisors to establish a tax appeal fee. And that's what the item this morning, the ordinance, if introduced, would start the process in the adoption of that fee. The Division of Cannabis Control conducted the fee study with assistance from the Tax Collector's Office and County Council. We examined all of the steps that we anticipate would go into hearing a cannabis tax appeal fee. In the process, that follows what the board established on August 10, when it passed a resolution that had the cannabis tax appeal fees going before the hearing officer rather than before the Board of Supervisors. We've prepared and submitted with this IQM to item a fee study report. So what I'd like to do now is just kind of walk through that and look at some of the diagrams and the analysis that went into. The fee that we are proposing as a reasonable estimate, it's $1,215.80. So let me get into share screen. So what you should be able to see now is a flow chart that shows the appeal process from the point of a decision of the treasurer or tax collector that is appealable under Chapter 3.56. So after that decision is made, with respect to the amount of tax, for example, or the imposition of penalties or interest, the appeal being filed is the next step under Section 356180. So from this point, the appeal would be lodged with the clerk of the hearing officer who receives and processes that appeal, and I'll get into some more details of some of the tasks that the clerk would fulfill at this point. But generally speaking, from this point, it's going to be disseminated to the Tax Collector's Office, as well as to the hearing officer, who would then be assigned and receive the file and have the job of analyzing and preparing for the hearing at that point, which is the next step for both the tax collector and the hearing officer. After preparation, and in this process, the hearing would be set, and so we move on to the appeal hearing itself. Down below, we estimate the amount of time for this is an hour and a half. Again, we'll get into some more detail about that. But after the hearing takes place, we have the hearing officer rendering a written opinion, and then the clerk of the hearing officer essentially at that point picking up and handling the coordination of notices and post-hearing matters. So as a general comment about this, the appeal fee being set at $1,215.80 is something that the DCC wanted to be able to bring to the Board of Supervisors as a reasonable estimate, full-cost recovery on this. And so you'll see that there are assigned times in here that we think are the best estimate of what it will take to do that. So starting with the actual appeal intake, this is going to be the clerk of the hearing officer taking in the appeal, setting hearing dates. A lot of what goes into this is coordination and communication. So they're reaching out to the tax collector, they're reaching out to the hearing officer, and any other party involved, and coordinating schedules amongst all of these groups. There's also the job of disseminating the briefs, collecting the briefs. So a lot of the coordination here is time-consuming for the clerk, and so we assigned a value of an hour and a half for that. Moving on to the appeal review and preparation, this is also going to involve time commitment from the hearing officer, from the tax collector, and the tax collector is likely going to be consulting with the Division of Cannabis Control. So we've added what we estimate is about a half of an hour for us to be able to pull the file, provide information on the permit issue, and essentially be able to provide what we can in aid of the appeal hearing taking place. So we've estimated some time for us. We have about a half hour of time for county counseling here. We believe that county council will be involved in the briefing and file review with the tax collector, who is the real party in interest in these appeals. So the tax collector will be spending time preparing, working up the file, briefing exhibits, and preparing materials for the hearing itself. And so we've built in a time estimate of one and a half hours for the tax collector's office. And when we get to the bottom of the fee study, we have a diagram that summarizes and itemizes all of these, so we'll be able to recap. Likewise, the hearing officer, we expect, will spend time preparing for this, working up the file, and preparing questions and issues that they may see in the file, and we've estimated that amount of time to be one hour. Our hearing officers are billed at a contractual rate of $150 per hour. For the conducting of the hearing, we've estimated, based on our experience, under 1795 experience from the UO tax appeals themselves, and just sort of examining some of the issues that make them come up in those hearings, that an hour and a half is a reasonable estimate of the amount of time that that hearing will take. So that would be an hour of time for each of the parties involved in that, including the hearing officer, the clerk of the hearing officer, the tax collector. And additionally, we expect that there will be a deputy county counsel four involved in the cannabis tax appeals on behalf of the tax collector, so they have an hour and a half in this as well. So each of these parties down below will have an hour and a half reflected for the conducting of the hearing itself. And from that point, it's just a matter of the hearing officer rendering a written opinion, so they will be looking at their notes, remembering on the hearing some of the issues that may have been in their mind, and making factual determinations based on the hearing itself, and then writing an actual written opinion. That opinion will go to the clerk of the hearing officer, who would then be responsible for notices after the hearing and disseminating that opinion. So we've built in an hour of time for the hearing officer and a half hour of the clerk's time in summarizing and ending the appeal process itself. So the totals that we've arrived at, and each of these hourly rates are going to either be the contractual rate, which is definite for the hearing officers themselves, or the fully-weighted hourly rates for each of the specific individuals that we've identified would be involved in the appeal process. So these are specific weighted rates for each of the individuals that we expect to be involved in the hearing process. And multiplying those times, the sum of the hours that are referred to above, we have the following costs for each of the individuals. That would be $525 for the hearing officer, $147.37 for the clerk, a deputy county counsel four at $141.43, and deputy county counsel one at $50.68, the director of cannabis control at $39.12, and the tax collector at $312.20, for a total of $1,215.80. So this reflects what the Division of Cannabis Control is proposing in the introduction of the ordinance today as a full-cost, reasonable estimate of the cost that an appeal hearing would result in to handle the appeal in front of the county hearing officer. So with that, the Board of Supervisors has options with respect to this ordinance. We're recommending and proposing that the Board of Supervisors approve the introduction of the ordinance today with the fee in the amount of $1,215.80. The board could choose not to, could direct staff to conduct some more analysis. The board could also choose to, if there were a lesser amount that the board were interested in having the appeal fee set at, choose to direct staff to conduct more analysis or do some line item adjustments today. But at any rate, we recommend that the board approve this as proposed. The DCC... The DCC actually bills its time to individual object codes, so we know after some experience with this and having gone through several appeals, we'll be able to come back and track the progress of the appeals and how the actual costs have panned out in those appeals. But we expect for that cost to be $1,215.80 as an estimate. But with that, I'm happy to answer any questions or get into any more details that the board is interested in.
Thank you, Mr. Wayland. Any board questions? Ms. Coway?
Mr. Wayland, we need two attorneys for an appeal hearing.
Well, that's Supervisor Coway. That's a good question, and that's actually sort of a cost-saving distinction that's been made in the fee study, because rather than having a deputy four involved from the start on this, we've got a deputy one who would be assigned and helping with the, working up the files. So that's the reason that there's a deputy one and a deputy four in there. It actually would save money in the fee itself.
Right. And then your time, the director of cannabis control's time, is just half an hour? I mean, it's your department that puts the facts together.
Well... Sorry to interrupt.
No. I mean, why wouldn't...
So...
We have a third attorney, because you're an attorney too, so now we've got three attorneys for an appeals hearing. Of course, you're not an attorney in this case, you're the director, but I have a problem, I mean, just to cut to the chase, I have a problem with the amount, and I appreciate revisiting it. But I go back to the Assessment Appeals Board, and maybe Ms. Moss Lewis can address that. What is the fee that we charge in an assessment appeals hearing compared to what we're charging in this appeal?
Supervisor Coway, I, you know, I actually don't know what the assessment appeal fee is. I believe that planning charges a $500 appeal fee, and in those situations, the board had, if I remember correctly, chosen less than full cost recovery. So that is the board's option. I actually think that Mr. Wayland put together a conservative estimate of the actual time that will be spent in these fees. I honestly think that it'll be more for his shop and actually more for our shop, given the brief, you know, developing briefs and working with the tax collector to put everything together, but we were trying to be conservative with respect to actual cost aspects. The board is certainly within its, you know, has the freedom to direct that we insert a fee that is less than full cost recovery.
Well, I guess I look at it, and the reason I picked on you, because I know you, at least in the past, represented the assessor's office. So here we have another, an appeal system, just looking at the model, and we have to have two attorneys for this appeal hearing, and we don't have an appeal, an attorney assigned for the Assessment Appeals Board.
Wait, just to interject Supervisor Coway, we do have attorneys assigned both to the assessor's office and to the Assessment Appeals Board. I sit with the Assessment Appeals Board to hear those appeals. The clerk, the board clerk clerks those and may be able to tell you what that fee is for AAB appeals. And again, I just want to emphasize that the two attorneys, we took the total time, a conservative estimate of time that we think it would take for attorneys in my office to represent the county, the tax collector, in these appeals, and then we split that time. It's not doubling it or adding on. We split that time between two attorneys, one of which is a lower cost in an effort to reduce the cost to the county, although again, the board is certainly free to not engage in full cost recovery and subsidize some of the cost of these appeals if it so chooses.
Well, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, I mean, unless my colleagues so choose to, it just seems, how does this model differ from a model that we do with the Assessment Appeals Board?
And I think, I think the short answer to that is certainly for many assessment appeals and for planning commission appeals, we are not, the county is not engaging in full cost recovery, it is subsidizing the cost of those appeals. You know, remember that this is an average. Some will be less, many will be more. We have assessment appeals that I spend what feels like months of my life working on, but the fee, you know, is the same for all of them. That's kind of the nature of the beast. So I think that's the short answer, is that we're not getting full cost recovery on those other appeals.
I heard that. Thank you.
Any further board questions, comments? With that, a public comment.
There is no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to board and entertain a motion.
Well, since I had most of the questions and concerns, I'll introduce and waive full reading of this uncodified ordinance establishing a cannabis tax appeal fee.
A motion, my apologies.
No, that's fine. Go ahead.
A motion by Ms. Coway. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Fuldorff. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes on a 401, absent of the board. With that, we'll move on to supervisors' announcements. In compliance with Government Code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements to report out. Ms. Coway?
Yesterday, I was on the CSAC Health and Human Services Committee meeting, and I did address to the State Director, McCoyd Wade, that we do not support the hubs and spokes initiative that they're proposing in relation to the area agencies. Our area agency 12 has, does not support it, and there'll be an item on the agenda in two weeks. I discussed it with the board a couple of weeks ago. And I had talked with Corey Allen and Kristen Miller, who's head of Area 12, about the other issues and what kinds of things that we could use. In reading between the lines of what the director said, it's long-term. I think they're looking to do, to somewhat break up the Area 12 agents, the area agencies, and they have a model in mind, so it's something that this county and the other counties in the JPA will have to watch as the years go by. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coway. I have nothing to report. Mr. Toffenelli?
I have nothing to report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. Ms. Fuldorff?
I have nothing to report, but I just want to say thank you to the Planning Department. I know Amber is leaving us, and her and I got to go on a tour last week of some property down in Copper, and I just enjoyed working with her the last couple of months, and now that funness gets to go over to Gina, but I just wanted to do a shout out of appreciation for the time that Amber has spent here at the county helping herself.
Thank you, Ms. Fuldorff. Thank you, everyone. We called out a day.